We all here?
Yep.
Alrighty then, I will call this meeting, regular meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Happy almost fall. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we go start the agenda, I want to make a motion to add one item to the agenda. I will make it number 5A, and this is consideration of a request for, to replace a truck, pickup truck for park and rec department. So I'll make a motion that we add park and rec truck consideration under 5A. There's a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that'll be, I see Eileen is with us tonight, so we'll, we'll make that the first business item, because I don't think that's going to take long. Next order of business is consideration of the approval of the regular minutes, minutes of the regular meeting of August 18th. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alright, I'll, I'll second. Any, any, any changes, comments?
No.
And hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. First selectman's report, got a bunch of stuff to cover for you. In fact, I, I wrote this down so, because there's so much there, I emailed it to you, but we'll put this as part of the minutes too. Item number one, COVID-19 status, as I'm sure you read, over the past two weeks, there was a spike in Danbury's COVID numbers, and that spike caused them to curtail youth sports. Not school sports, but anything connected to the independent leagues, like the Police Athletic Association, the soccer and baseball leagues were shut down until further notice. I, I have been covering the numbers every, like every other day or so with Lord of the Seal and Tom Galliford to make sure that Bethel was not trending in the same direction. So far, we're not seeing any spillover from that. So our numbers are holding steady, they're low, they're safe. We are not in a position where we have to curtail anything, and school is scheduled to open on the 8th in a hybrid mode, so there'll be two main cohorts that'll switch back and forth, but with the goal of going to full day school by the, by the middle of October and phasing that in, as long as the numbers stay low. Dr. Carver reports that so far about 18% of the parents have opted for distance learning only. They can opt out of that and send the kids back to school whenever they feel comfortable doing so, but the school, school district is doing a very good job of working with parents to make them feel as comfortable as possible. On Thursday, last Thursday, August 27th, I was invited to speak. I was one of two municipal officials that was invited to speak to the state legislature's Energy and Technology Committee concerning EverSource's recovery efforts from the storm. I did not have kind things to say about the company. I had to wait, just so you know, I had to wait 11 hours. The meeting started at 10:30 in the morning. I sat, I did not have a chance to speak until 9:30 at night. And unfortunately, the two EverSource executives who had been at the beginning of the meeting stayed on until about 3:30, but then they were excused, so they didn't get to hear what I had to say. So briefly, what I reported to them was that EverSource failed to properly plan and properly pre-position repair assets to aid in the storm recovery in a timely manner. When the storm was over, 67% of Bethel was without power. This runs counter to their claim that this was the most destructive storm in the state's history. It was nowhere near as destructive as some previous one, and the weather data proved that. Full recovery for Bethel took about nine and a half days, almost 10 days. And that is nearly as long as the October snowstorm of 2012, which blacked out 90% of Bethel, which had a lot more damage, but it still took them all that time. EverSource's storm management liaison system was ineffective in deploying line and tree crews into high priority locations. Bethel Police Department, for example, was left without power for six and a half days following the storm, as were all of our wastewater and water pumping facilities. They had to run on generators, and the generators came close, came within a couple hours of running out of fuel several times, because we couldn't get fuel up there either. Cor of Bethel's downtown business district, including Carolusie's food market and several other smaller businesses, were without power for six and a half days. At least one business may shut down permanently that was because of this. It was struggling to stay afloat because of the COVID shutdown anyway, but this may have just put them under. They're, they're, they're very close to going away. And then here's the, the part that disturbed me the most is that when they, when the EverSource, the two EverSource executives were challenged by the lawmakers about things like this, about the lack of make-safe crews, about the lack of tree and road clearing. For example, we had neighborhoods that were blocked, dead end roads that were fully blocked for up to, up to four days. And EverSource crews drove right by them to go to places where they could turn on the lights and make their numbers look better. When, when they were challenged, when the two EverSource executives, by the way, were Jim Judge, who was the CEO, and Craig Hallstrom, who was the Vice President of Electric Operations, they said that turning the lights on where it was possible to do so was just as important as clearing roads and, clearing wires from roads. They actually, which is a ludicrous statement, but they actually said that several times. And, and then again, when pressed, Mr. Hallstrom even said, asking why, sounds like Bethel kept asking and asking and asking for resources to clear those trees and wires. Mr. Hallstrom's comment, and I quote, was municipal priorities may not be the same as ours.
Oh.
Us, this is, I, I wrote it down, because I was just so flabbergasted. So what this has led to, just today, just this morning, the Energy and Technology Committee announced that it will hold a special listening session coming up on Tuesday, September 8th. So that's a week from today, to hear comments from the public on legislation being proposed to address the problems in the recovery. So I copied you guys in on this, this announcement. It just came out this afternoon. There is a bill proposed which would require the, just the electric company to open, operate, and staff regional service centers. It turns out that EverSource has shut down most of their regional centers that we, that we would usually have access to. Requires them to provide residential customers with $120, $25 credit to their account for each day a power outage exceeds 72 hours. Would require them to reimburse customers up to $500 for food or prescription drugs that were spoiled due to outages that last more than 72 hours. Requires PURA, Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, to initiate a proceeding to investigate, develop, and adopt a framework for implementing performance-based regulation of the utility, instead of what they have now, which basically guarantees them, and hang on to your hat, the, the current regulation guarantees them a 9.5% profit, which is, you know, that, call me old fashioned, but I come from the days when a regulated utility was allowed to make a tiny profit, and their role was to provide an essential public good, and that's why they were granted a monopoly. It would prohibit PURA from allowing electric companies to recover executive compensation packages in rates which exceed comparable compensation in other states. And, and lastly, requires PURA to initiate a proceeding to consider implementation of an interim rate decrease, a low income rate, and an economic development rate to aid businesses. So I applaud the legislature for quickly addressing these concerns and putting this on the table. I do believe that there is a special session of the state legislature coming up later in the month, but I, I have forwarded this stuff to Rich and Paul, so you guys can read that. And I encourage you to, if you have time, to, to log into the Zoom meeting and give your thoughts to the Energy Committee. It will be an open meeting, and as soon as they publish the Zoom link, I'll let you guys know. So that's all I have for a selectman's report. Do you guys have any questions or comments?
Matt, have you thought about perhaps expressing your comments about this through the social, very social media outlets that people read on a daily basis, such as Bethel Buzz or whatever these things are for the next Tuesday's PURA meeting or whoever's meeting? I, I think that should really come from, you know, your office stating, this is an opportunity for people to speak their piece.
Absolutely. And I, I got this about four o'clock this afternoon, so first thing tomorrow, you bet. That is exactly what I'm going to do, because
Good.
I, in one of the last storm updates, I actually put the address and the email link to PURA and invited people to, to send in their comments, and a lot of people did, and they, and other first selectmen and mayors from around the state did the same thing, and PURA got flooded. If you go to the, you go to the PURA site, you can see on the docket number, it's 08, no, 200803 is the docket on, on the, the storm investigation. And you can see there's a lot of comments from elected officials and from just people of all walks of life. So it was, you know, the, the disheartening thing is, we went through this in 2011 with Hurricane Irene, then with the winter snowstorm, the October storm, the following year with Hurricane Sandy. The state convened a special panel, they called it the Two Storm Panel. They made all these recommendations about how to improve the recovery. And when CLMP, when Connecticut Light and Power was purchased by the holding company that then became a regional entity that we now know as EverSource, that stuff just went right out the window. And I can tell you, the executives, the senior executives, the guys who get the million dollar bonuses, they don't even want to talk to municipal officials. I mean, they literally cut us out of the equation. So here we are, you know, like Steve Pugner, Chief Pugner called me up about day three or day four, and he says, I think they're ignoring us. We can't get, we can't get the power back out at the police station. So, and they were, they were, they, they absolutely were ignoring every municipal official, and they were just following their own internal protocol. As a matter of fact, this Mr. Hallstrom, the VP of Electric Operations, on Monday, which would have been the 10th of Au, of August, it's a day six of the, of the storm recovery, actually held a press conference in Danbury over by the mall, where they had a mobile command center set up. And they didn't even notify any municipal officials from the area, like no outreach, no, hey, how you guys doing? You know, could, we know you're suffering, can we help? Can you, can you tell us where the trouble spots are? We'll try to get to those first. Absolutely nothing. So you can bet that they haven't heard the last of me, and I feel sorry for our EverSource rep, because she's a very nice person, and she was not, actually not even on duty, was having, she's afraid to call me, I think, for fear, for fear I'll yell at her. But I won't. Anyway, any other comments on that?
No.
So we'll, we'll put that, I'll put that up on social media, we'll get as many people as possible. Item number four is public comments. I, I think Eileen disappeared. Nobody there? Okay. No correspondence tonight, right, Deanne? Alright, so now we're at 5A. You have in your material that was, and this was, this was sent out late. Hey, Deanne, can you bring it up? Well, actually, there's nobody else on the, go ahead and bring it up on the screen, you know, the. So the situation is, this was, this was an item that Eileen had put in her capital non-recurring budget in a couple of months ago, when we did the, the budget process. This is to replace a pickup truck that the park and rec uses to haul dirt, haul, haul around the Boeing equipment, the snow removal equipment, and so on. It's a 2006 Ford, has 90,000 miles on it, you know, all pretty beat up miles, you know, just going around town hauling heavy stuff. The bed and frame are rusted, rusted through in some places. It can't go in reverse and is now off the road. You know, it was, it was, was at least going forward for a while. Now it's not on the road at all. Seats are shot, shocks are shot, it's unsafe to drive, and in, in Eileen's opinion, it doesn't make any sense to try to put any more money into a 14-year-old truck. So she has proposed purchasing a 2020 Chevrolet Silverado 1500. This is a state bid price through the GSA system, or whatever the state calls it. And the purchase price is $36,579. So see, this how we had this on our CNR list anyway. I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve and send to the Board of Finance for their consideration, purchase of a 2020 Silverado that to exceed $36,579. There's a second? Alright, second for Rich. Floor is open for discussion?
Yeah.
Matt? Yeah. Okay, Rich?
She's using it for hauling around dirt and everything. 1500 series truck is not adequate for that purpose. They'll beat the crap out of that truck. It, it should be a 2500 series. She's hauling anything around that's heavy or towing, it should be the next size truck up.
Should be, should be, should be more.
Is, is generally a half-ton truck. Yeah.
Okay.
It should be the 2500 series. If she's putting any kind of weight in it or hauling stuff in it, it should be the next size truck. I'm not in favor of it. I mean, is she going to be on, is she going to come on?
Well, she was, she was there, and I don't know if she lost her connection. Hold on, hold tight for a minute.
Hi, I am calling her. She had an issue going on at the track, so I'm going to just call her real quick, and that way she can, she can get in on this conversation.
Okay.
Let me add, let me add something to it also. Are we switching brands? Because I know we were predominantly Ford. We've always wanted to stabilize the, the
Yeah.
Stabilize, stabilize the, the stock such that for repairs, we have just one brand. Now, are we just dropping Ford and going over to Chevy?
Good question. Tell you what. Why don't we?
Okay, so they've got some questions. I'm gonna. Okay, I tell you what, hold one second. Guys, could we maybe move to the next item on the agenda and give Eileen a chance to get back to her, her house, so she can jump back on the call?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, Eileen, we're going to move on to the next, next item on the agenda, and as soon as you get in and you log on, then we'll come back to this.
Okay.
Thanks, that's okay, fine.
Okay, so just to, just to keep this on the up and up, I'll withdraw my motion, and Richard, withdraw your second, and then we'll just go back to that. Alright?
Okay, okay.
Okay, so next order of business is consideration of the appointment of Mr. Michael J. Moore to the Parks and Recreation Commission to fill the vacancy from Gary Regan. Paul, you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion that we place him on the, the commission.
Alright, and Rich will second that. Any, any discussion? Nope. Well, let me just say, welcome to, to Mike Moore. Thank you for, for volunteering to serve the town, and I want to give a real special shout out to Gary Regan, because he has served in numerous capacities for a lot of years. He's been on the Board of Finance, he's been on the Park and Rec Commission, which was, I think, his, his first real love as far as service to the town. He's been very supportive of the Park and Rec program and youth sports. And I, I know he's got some work challenges, so he can't, you know, he has to back away for a while, but I really appreciate all the time, the many, many years that Gary Regan has devoted to the town. So thank you very much to Gary for that. So I'll try your minds, we have a
I got a question.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Has Mr. Moore been involved with the Park and Rec? I, I don't know the gentleman.
That I don't know. Paul, do you know?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But I, I think I heard that he was a youth coach. So he's involved in that, I think.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll try your minds. We have a motion on the floor to appoint Michael J. Moore. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. And then the last item, before we go back to the truck, is, this is the item that I messed up at the last meeting. This is the consideration of additional services, service agreements with STV, DB, DB, BPM, sorry, I keep stumbling over that. Basically, this is the, this is the firm that employs Geraldine Horoff. Rich, I know you, you are very familiar with her work as the owner's rep on the school project, and due to the demands of the COVID shutdown and, and a lot of things related to the projects, the Building Committee, with the support of the Board of Beth, has asked that we retain Geraldine's services through the end of the project, which will result in, in a little bit of an extra charge, but it's within the budget, within the contingencies for such things. So I think we've copied in all the, all the material there. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve the request to extend the contract for STV-DCM for both Rockwell and Johnson projects as requested. There's a second? Alright, Rich seconded. Okay, floor is open?
Okay, let, let me put my old hat on from Building Committee. To me, this is, they shortbid themselves on this request, because, you know, I understand they're saying the COVID crisis, well, there's been no, no children in the school since March, basically. I just don't understand why we have to pay for their shortfall. You know, maybe, Rich, you can answer this for me, because you, you sit as ex officia on that committee. But, you know, the, the bid was a bid, there was, was a fixed price right from the beginning. I understand we can use this for contingency, but to me, it's always, well, hey, it's a municipality, let's, let's do a change order. They can afford it, because we know they have a contingency.
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
Okay, first of all, their original bid was much higher than they settled on. The Building Committee had cut it back significantly, and it was pretty much as, go on as needed. So I believe, and maybe Marty can attest to this, that they're still under the original budget. But this was work that, that they were not to do or supervise. It was supposed to be done by some of the Board of Ed people, the janitors, the teachers, and packing. And when the school closed down, basically, everybody just walked out of the building, and the town was left with dealing with the situation. So Geraldine, Geraldine's company stepped in and organized all the moving and storage of all, all that stuff that was left in the school that needed to be moved out for the construction phasing.
Yeah, that, that's, what Rich said is my, my understanding as well. I remember when we first were talking about the contract, I discussed it with several members of the board, and one of the things was, just as Rich said, they had a, a, a larger scope of services with a much, much greater contract. And, and to put it in simpler terms, I think what happened was the, the commission decided that, let's, let's play it by year, and let's see how it goes, and if we need more, we can always add it back in. And I believe that that was, that's what came about from that. And I think that's the case now, that's part of it. The, the only thing that I want to say though is, if this is an extension of their current contract, what they did was, if, if you look at the paperwork that was submitted, I told, I spoke to Rich about this today, but if you look at their, their terms and conditions, if this is just an extension of their duties under the original contract, they added terms and conditions that are not what we agreed to. Those terms and conditions that we have here now are older terms and conditions that we had changed. Like, I, you know, I can give you one thing right off the bat, I can see we're under fees and payments. They had down there that, you know, there was going to be a penalty, an interest of 18%, you know, if we weren't paid. I had that removed. So I think that if we're going to accept this, not me, if the board is going to accept this and move forward, that they remove all that, and they rely on the initial terms and conditions, then we don't have to worry about it.
You know, I'm, I'm going to guess that they just pulled out their boilerplate.
No, I agree. I, I, I don't think, I don't think there was any malice on their part, or, you know, skullduggery. I just think that, you know, they just did that. They just pulled it out. Let's make it consistent, that's all.
Well, I'll modify my motion to say approve subject to the same terms and conditions as originally agreed to.
Approved by the town attorney.
Yeah, approved by the town attorney.
Okay.
Because I, I'm sure that's not a problem. Alright. Okay, any other questions on that?
So I'm sorry, your, your modification to that is the same terms and conditions, or just as approved by town attorney?
As, well, the same terms and conditions as the original contract in the, and also as approved by the town attorney.
Okay.
Because that, that'll take us back to what was signed before the project started.
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Paul, any more questions?
No, I, I, I think Rich answered it adequately for me, because like I said, you know, I look at it originally as, it was nothing but a short bid process, but my, my big question mark is, yeah, they had to do some extra work, okay, let's pay them for that, but I don't want to say any further extensions.
Yeah, gotcha.
As I mentioned, Paul, their, their original contract was much higher than they're actually doing the whole project for.
But, but they accepted it, right, Rich?
Well, with the understanding that we would work together, and if there was some extra work needed, that they would, you know.
Yeah, and of course, we didn't work together because of the COVID crisis, crisis, okay, fine.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, hearing none, so I'll try your minds. We have a motion on the floor as, as, as stated, to approve under conditions that we, they, they accept the same terms and conditions as previously agreed to. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
While we're still on this, just, just an extension of the, of the subject here.
Sure.
Rich, let me just ask you, are they on schedule or off schedule as far as the completion?
School's scheduled to open the 8th with all the amenities for the, has the school wanted for right now. The, the schools will not be 100% complete. They're going to still be working in other areas, such as maybe the music room, the gymnasium, the cafeterias, but the kitchens are up and running, will be up and running for them to provide the lunches for the kids. The bus loops, the bus loops have been completed. The main entrance going into Johnson School is not available. They're going to be using one of the other new entrances temporarily while they finish up that main entrance. So yes and no, Paul?
So another, but, but don't we have penalties in the contract for not being on time?
No, the, the, the project runs through October.
Okay, alright.
It was, it was scheduled to go into this year. The, the biggest push was to get the school ready for opening.
Yeah. Because I, I drove by Rockwell, I'm just looking at that, they're still up on the roof there, putting an air handling. And it says, no way in the world are they going, is the air handling going to be ready that fast?
Yeah. Yeah, there, there's some question about that right now, as running on automatic operations versus manual operations. So the, they're, they're probably going to go with the manual operations for right now to get school.
But the drop, drop dead date was what, October?
I believe it was the end of October.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Okay, alright, we're going to go back to 5A and the truck, and Eileen, the guy, the guys, Rich and Paul both had some questions for you about that.
Okay, sorry, sorry you had to leave.
So, Eileen, Matt had mentioned that you use this truck for hauling around dirt and debris and, and for towing. Shouldn't you have a 2500 truck versus a 15? A 2500 series truck versus a 1500?
Well, this one does the smaller trailers and the smaller loads, because we do have a rack body truck already, and then we have another bigger truck that we have for hauling the larger trailer. This does the main trailer, it also does, it holds our diesel gas tank that we have. It would, it utilizes transporting part-time staff. So the smaller 1500 will, it serves us well. It can do trailer, you know, the, the larger one. It can do trailer, you know, the, the larger one if it needs to, but it won't trailer it when the large mowers are on it. We have two other trucks that have that capability.
Are you planning to put a plow on this truck?
We were not planning on doing that, because I don't, I, I do not have a plow to put on it, so, but we also have the rack body truck that is, has a plow attachment as well already, so we don't plow parking lots, so, so we do all our snow removal by, we're on the smaller scale, so.
What size truck are you replacing it in? Is that a half ton or three quarter ton?
It's a, it's a, it's a half ton, it's a Ford 150, it's a smaller truck. This is actually a bigger truck than what we have now, because it has a little bit more power and it has a bigger extended cab than the one we presently have.
Did you happen to get a price of the bigger truck, Ben Chan?
No, but if you want me to, I can, because I did fifty thousand in there in a brand new one fifty, this type of truck would be fifty thousand. This one is a twenty twenty and has eight thousand miles on it, and we can get it for thirty six, so I thought it was a pretty good deal.
And I, my personal opinion, I think you should go for the bigger truck.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, I can call a guy tomorrow, because I have a, an appointment on Thursday morning to get a quote on how much they'll give us for our truck, and I can ask them for a price for the larger one as well, if, you know.
All right, and then Paul has a question for you.
Yeah, Eileen, you know, we're trying to standardize the fleet, I know most of our trucks are Fords, why aren't we switching over to Chevy?
Well, I've dealt with Ingersoll for the past two trucks that I, three trucks that I have, so, and he seems to give us the best deal for the type of truck that we have, not the Ford. The Fords are for the dump trucks and the, and low bodies, the, the
The low boys?
Been happy, the low boys and the, the fifteen hundreds are, are good, the Chevy trucks are just as good as a Ford. We have one now, the green one, I forget, it's a two, twenty five, a two fifty, and it works great, and, and Ingersoll will do us a service, like a lot of our service for the first year, they keep us on track of any recalls for the, of them, you know, the, the engines and everything, so the Ford seems to be for the low body and the, the dump, big dump trucks, so. You know, I, I mean, most of us have leased, I mean, do our leasing, the other vehicles that are in town.
Throw in Ram for the hell of it. Maybe I'm gonna throw in Ram for the hell of it, you know?
He's a guy.
I've had my Dodge Durango, you know, since ninety eight, it still runs, so. All right, that was my only question.
Man, if it's, even if we have a special meeting to approve the truck next week rather than wait until the following week, I, I'd like Eileen to look into it.
Okay, all right. Well, I've already withdrawn the motion, so we can, we can just let it, yeah, we can, yeah, our next meeting is only two weeks away anyway, so.
Well, if she wants to move forward, maybe we could just have a little quick special meeting on it.
Yeah, yeah. Eileen, is that, is that, does that like bring the circus to a halt if we wait two weeks? Will you check that out?
Well, I'll check it out on Thursday when I meet with them, and if you can't hold either truck for two weeks, then I'll let you know, and then you'll have to have a special meeting. But the problem is, is if you guys wait two weeks, then we gotta wait the third week for the finance, right?
Yeah.
Is that like four weeks?
Yeah, so if they can't hold it for four weeks, then we have a good deal, I don't want to miss out on that.
Okay.
But, so I can let you know on Thursday afternoon.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Emily.
Did you approve my member, my new commission member?
Yes, yes, yeah, we did that.
Okay, great, thanks.
We were wondering what his background is, he's been involved in youth sports, right?
Oh, yeah, he's, he's, he's been involved in softball, he does all of other programs his kids have done before and after, they've done a lot of things, they've been, he's involved in a lot of different things with our department, you know, with our programming, but his main focus has been softball, so.
Okay, that, that was the question we had.
Okay, great.
All right, let's conclude our, our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Paul, second by Rich, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries, thank you, everyone, have a sparkling evening.